Okay, we will call to order the rigor meeting of the Batavia City Council for Monday, Monday, March 7th, 2022. And item number one is the call to order and the second item on the agenda is the invocation to be filed by the Pledge of Allegiance. So I'd ask that everybody please rise for brief invocation to be filed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight in what is turning into a very troubled world, we are ever mindful that we in Batavia are at a fortunate place in the position of the world and in the eyes of world history. We are served by a country that is at peace, although we are heavily involved in other parts of the world, but we don't have the great military actions and other terrible things that are happening in other parts of our world, and for that we are ever more thankful. We however, tonight want to send a special blessing and wish for hope and understanding to Ukraine and all those that surround it, and ask that there be intervention and that we return the world to a more normal state of arms, and that also that those who are being so badly impacted over there are served with some support and blessing, and that we as a, as a world go forth and try to overcome our great difficulties in a peaceful manner. As always tonight, I want to ask for a special blessing on the members of the city council as we go about the vital issues before us, asking that each alderman be blessed with a sound heart and mind and vision as we go about taking action on items on our agenda. Also tonight, as always, we want to remember those from our community who are serving in the defense and liberties of the United States of America and whatever part of the world they're in, and we just ask that all those serving for the United States of America along those from our community who are serving within them, that a special blessing be showered upon them as they go about what are troubling times. As always, we ask for understanding and appreciation and acknowledgement by the members of the city council as we act on the items of business before us, and certainly I know within my own heart and mind and within the communities that we are blessed here to have a city council that is really truly has the best interest of Batavia at heart and always tries to act in a fair and honorable manner. And finally, tonight, we want to just ask for a special blessing about anyone from our community who is under some type of a health emergency, and that just a special blessing be showered upon them. We ask for all these blessings. Amen. Let's see, who hasn't had it recently? One, Lee, when you want to leave some Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, moving to item number three, I'd ask the city clerk to please call the roll.
Miller.
Here.
Rosado.
Here.
Beck.
Here.
Connolly.
Here.
Chanset.
Here.
Wolf.
Here.
Sulfah.
Here.
Barron.
Here.
Lehman.
Here.
Ayazi.
Here.
Malay.
Here.
Uer.
Here.
Serone.
Here.
Vogel singer.
Here.
Fourteen are present, Your Honor.
We have the entire city council either zooming or present in the room, so, very good, nice to have that. We generally do, but sometimes we don't, but this is good to see this tonight. Okay, item number four, which is a reminder on my agenda here that we please ask that if you're going to address the city council, you come forward and use the microphone, because this is being broadcast in BATV, and if we don't have you speaking into the microphone, it's very, very difficult for the people on TV, watching TV, to hear what you're having to say. And we're trying to build, keep a record with that recording, and so we will ask that you speak into the microphone. Okay, moving to item number five, items to be removed, added, or changed from tonight's agenda. Do we have anything? Alderman Chanset?
I'm not aware of any.
Anybody on the council? Okay, moving right along, then moving to item number six, which is presentation of tonight's consent agenda. Alderman Chanset is Chairman of Governmental Services. Would you present this?
Indeed, Your Honor. The consent agenda reads as follows: To accept and place on file the committee of the whole minutes for January 11th, 2022, the November 2021 City Council financial report, the December 2021 City Council financial report. Approvals: March 4th, 2022, a payroll on the amount of $998,388.90. The accounts payable check register in the amount of $1,406,222.19. The city council minutes for February 21st, 2022. Approval: Cow executive session minutes for November 30th, 2021, and January 11th, 2022. Resolution 22-33-R authorizing a final balancing change order in the amount of $32,664.55 to MP system contract to complete breaker replacement at the Batavia substation. Ordinance 22-10 amending ordinance 17, 16 granting variances for a temporary parking lot at 111, 117 North River Street. Resolution 22-35-R authorization of an MSA with Tri-R Systems Incorporated. Your Honor, move that we approve the consent agenda as read.
Second. Move Alderman Chanset, second vote on Sulfah for the approval of the consent agenda presented. Any discussion on the consent agenda? Chair hurrying, now the clerk, please call the roll.
Chanset.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Sulfah.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Ayazi.
Aye.
Malay.
Aye.
Uer.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
Vogel singer.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Rosado.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Connolly.
Aye.
Fourteen yes, no, 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 absent.
Consent agenda is approved by a vote of fourteen yes, no, no's, and none absent. All right, moving to item number seven on our agenda is matters from the public for items that are not on the agenda. I'm told we may have some folks that want to speak tonight. If you want to speak, we'd ask you come one at a time and come up and use the microphone, tell us your name and for the record, and then whatever comments you wish to make.
Good evening. I am Shiloh Remmers. I am a resident here in Batavia. I am calling to, or I'm not calling, I'm actually here to raise a concern that I believe is a known concern from the research I've done regarding the crosswalk on 31 just beyond McKee and Duncan and Shell Station. This past Friday, my son was struck while trying to cross the crosswalk there. We are very, very lucky that he was not hurt and that he is still with us. It's my understanding that he's not the first to be struck at this crosswalk. There's a known issue with this crosswalk. I believe the city council and others have come up with viable solutions for this crosswalk, and from what I understand, it's just stalled. There's essentially a blind spot for folks trying to cross when traffic is stopped from the inside lane. My son's particular situation, he was trying to cross, he came back from the river to go fish, he was coming across, stopped at the crosswalk, traffic, and these two lanes stopped, traffic on this outer lane stopped. He could not see, he could not see traffic from the inside lane, and that motorist could not see him. The other motorist signaled for my son to cross the street. He started to cross the street. A driver approached from the inside lane and struck him. There's really no one at fault. I just feel like this crosswalk is incredibly unsafe. It's a known issue. It's been brought up before. I would like to know what's causing it to be stalled from being improved, removed, or moved down the street. It's just my only concern that I raise before you tonight, and thank you.
Thank you. Certainly, this has been in the, on the city council's agenda several times over the last few years. We've had quite a bit of conversation. As you've already indicated, we are not technically in control of that intersection. It's the Illinois Department of Transportation. Gary, our Public Works Director, I think, Gary, you want to make a few comments for us?
I can, thank you. I'm Gary Home. I'm Public Works Director. As the mayor said, we have been working with IDOT to try and implement safety improvements. It is their jurisdiction. I can report to you positively that the project is not stalled. We actually, last October, city council approved a contract with an engineering firm to do an initial feasibility study, and then hopefully a Phase One in engineering, and I'll explain that in a second, for a road diet. So a road diet would take the road to one lane northbound, one lane southbound, with a center lane that would provide refuge for pedestrians, make it safer to cross. We met last October with IDOT as the project was getting started, and really kind of began with a basic question of would IDOT even consider this idea? And they said that they would, but, but that we would need to demonstrate through traffic studies and analysis that, that it would work. So city council awarded a contract for what we're calling a feasibility study first, and that's the study that will just run this basic analysis of traffic data in order to see if it meets kind of some simple criteria that IDOT will approve. If it meets that criteria, then IDOT has told us that they will be supportive of the project and we can go forward. I mentioned Phase One a few minutes ago. Phase One, Phase Two, and Phase Three are three defined phases in the IDOT process. Phase One is a preliminary study phase that involves public input, looks at environmental issues, looks at other impacts. You have to go through the Phase One study. It's a, it's a requirement to getting any, any, any chance of getting funding is through the federal process. Phase Two would then be engineering design, which, that's the regular straightforward design work, and then Phase Three is the construction. So, as I said, we awarded a contract last October, January 28th, so about five weeks ago now, our consultant presented the preliminary traffic data and analysis, and they're scheduled by mid-March, so literally in the next week or so, to have the feasibility study finished that we will give to IDOT. We are expecting IDOT to have some review. We have our fingers crossed that IDOT will approve it, as it does appear that the road diet concept can work, and then we can go straight into Phase One. And Phase One will go through the rest of 2022, possibly into 2023. Phase Two goes through the, to 2023, and construction could start probably as soon as 2024. And I know that sounds like a long time, but that's just how long these projects take.
Is there anything that we can do in the interim to keep our residents safe?
So that's a good question, too, and that is something the council has, has asked. Any improvements made out there require IDOT's approval and permits. We, the city cannot just go and do anything out there because it's not our road. We have asked IDOT for other types of improvements, and IDOT has not been supportive of those requests. IDOT is supportive of this road diet concept, so that's why we're, we're pursuing this, to try and, try and get this to a point where we can implement.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Good evening. My name's Lou Girmshide. I wanted to come out and we heard about Shiloh's son, and we wanted to kind of share with the, with the council as well our story. Did I tell you where I lived yet? 830 Blaine Street is where I live. We understood that there was another pedestrian versus car accident at McKee and 31. We're glad that your son's doing well. My nephew was hit at the same intersection when he was an early teenager, and my son was, also survived a car versus pedestrian accident there when he was 16 years old. My in-laws live at McKee and Lincoln Streets, and two out of six of their grandkids have been hit a block from their home. I urge the council to look closer at options, which it sounds like you are, for this and other crosswalks to keep all of our residents safe and to foster walkability of Batavia. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Hello. My name is Michael Smith. I'm one of the owners of the Culvers that we're going to be building soon on Randall Road. Katie and Susan Bogger are now the other two owners of the Culvers. I live in Chicago near Katie, and Susan lives in Madison, and we're just happy that we have the opportunity to become a part of the community. We searched for many years looking for our next location, and I'm very happy that we found a spot here in Batavia. A little bit about Culvers, every Culvers is independently owned and operated, and that gives us the opportunity to really integrate into the community. In the other communities that we're in, Donner's Grove and Skokie, we are proud sponsors of a lot of the high school athletics, theater programs, the Park District, the Community Center, and many other community activities, including the Niles Township Food Pantry near Skokie. We take great pride in running the best-in-class restaurants, and like I said, it's an owner-operator model, so we're there in the restaurants almost every single day. Colleen, who is sitting over here, she'll be running the day-to-day operations of this restaurant, and we plan on hiring 50 to 70 employees, and we're just thrilled to be in Batavia and grateful for the opportunity to be a part of this community.
Well, as your partner probably told you, she came down here one afternoon and spent an hour and 45 minutes with me before you made the final decision about whether you were going to do this or not. Now, I'll never forget the first question she asked of me when she, I believe it was her daughter came in with her, and she says, is it true that, living communities within Batavia?" And I said, "Yes, I can," and not all of them at that point had been fully completed, but we did have them on, and I said, "You know, among those in our community is the Homestead, which is one of the 10 largest ones in the Chicagoland area, and that's right up the corner here from about where you're going to be building." And then I noted, yeah, there was four more, or three more over on Fabian Parkway, and there's two, one in East Wilson and one right up north of us here. So we do have the six. And she then proceeded to share with me all the nice things that Culvers does to try to help the senior living community as far as menu items and whatever have you. So I've used this opportunity several times when I've been out speaking over the last, my, it was a year, six, eight months ago, and telling them about this visit I got from Culvers. And it amazes me, the number of older folks like myself that are probably 70 or above, they're big fans of Culvers, because you have five salads every day, and you have four or five soups every day, and you can take your grandchildren out there, which a lot of grandparents seem to like to do, and you can buy the soup and the salad, and the grandchildren can have the hamburger and the french fry and all the other good stuff. So, I mean, it sounded to me, and I think the staff that was with me when we had the meeting, and everybody was the opinion this was going to work. As you know, we moved your loc, not you, we didn't, but you moved your location around Batavia to a couple of different places you explored before you ended up where you are. So now I'm asked daily by people, "When's Culvers coming? Where exactly, Mayor, is it going to be?" And I give them, "Well, it's going to be in the south parking lot of the old TGI Fridays Restaurant, kind of in front of Menards." And so then everybody kind of puts that in their mind together, and they come up with where we're talking about. So I guess we're going to vote on this here in a couple of minutes, but I really appreciate you coming in. I think you're going to have a very, very, very good business in this town for the number of people who tell me they're already ready to come and eat right now if you were open. So it was an interesting exercise to be able to go through.
We're very excited. We have a lot of regulars that come to the restaurants every day, I think, so.
Yeah, I know you do, because I happened through some other stuff I'm involved with. I know the mayor in Downers Grove, and I know the mayor in Skokie. And the mayor in Skokie and I are kind of old pals from way back, and I asked him about, you know, what you had done, and he was telling me you took a corner of the old Orchard Shopping Center, and you built the store there, and how there was a number of senior living communities in close proximity to that in his town. And he says, "They're just raving about you being up there." So I get good things heard about you.
Thank you, we're happy to be here.
Anybody in the council have any questions at Culvers?
Just looking forward to my first concrete mixer.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else in the audience? Thank you, everybody, for coming down.
We have a hand online from the attendee list.
Can you put him on?
Cela, go ahead and speak, please.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Adesofki. I live at 1040 South Harrison Street. I'm speaking on behalf of my wife and I. Our son is another one of the children that was hit at the intersection of 31 and McKee in September of 2018. His cousin is Sam Girmshite. And I understand that things take time, especially dealing with IDOT and all of those rules and regulations. But I want to ask you to perhaps not answer today, but consider and address the question of, "Why hasn't that crosswalk been removed? Why have we not put in a sign directing pedestrians to cross at the light at Wilson?" I understand that there may have been good intentions in installing that crosswalk with the original warning lights and signs, but I think that it is quite clear now that in its current state, it is not only not effective, but adding to the danger of our community. You're talking about a study that through no fault of anyone here won't possibly see action until 2024, three years after this process was initiated. In the last three years, three children have been hit. And I ask you to consider any and all possibilities to remove that crosswalk while this process is being undertaken. And please direct people to cross the street at the light at Wilson. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, then, I guess we move to item number eight, which is the Chamber of Commerce report, and we're very honored to have CEO and President Margaret Perol here. Margaret?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for allowing me to speak to you tonight. Happy to see all of your faces. It's so nice not to have fogged-up glasses now without having to wear masks. We're thrilled with the decrease of the coronavirus cases that were, and the reduced mitigations that were allowing businesses to operate more normally. We know that economic job market surge is beating expectations, which is wonderful, but our businesses are really in need of finding workers. So we have an active job board on our chamber's website, and we have been boosting that on social media to try to find candidates to fill our open positions in the community. The chamber met with Scott Berger, the director of King County Office of Community Reinvestment and Workforce Development recently to see how we could partner, and how we could put our, we put our job board on their site and tried to give more visibility to the open positions, and trying to give them more visibility for the services they provide for people looking for jobs. I want to remind everyone, on a different note, that holiday bucks will be expiring soon. Those were the bonus bucks donated by the chamber. When somebody purchased chamber bucks, holiday bucks were given as a bonus, and they expire March 31st. Chamber bucks, on the other hand, never expire, and they're the ideal gift for any gift-giving occasion. The chamber is supporting the fireworks committee by asking local restaurants and retailers to put out a donation jar at their businesses to collect funds for the 2022 Batavia Sky Concert. The friendly competition rewards the business who collects the most amount of donations, and they will be rewarded with a song and its accompanying fireworks, named after their business, at the Sky Concert. If your business is interested, please contact me at the chamber if you'd like a donation jar. Anyone who enjoys the fireworks show on the Fourth of July is encouraged to donate to support this wonderful Batavia event. The Batavia Chamber of Commerce will award four scholarships to Batavia Public School District 101 High School students, each worth $750. The applications are due March 31st and are available on the chamber's website. They are in these categories: inspiring entrepreneurship, inspiring women in business, inspiring career and technical achievers, inspiring contributors to a Batavia Chamber business. We want to reward hard-working students so that they work hard in college and come back and open their business in Batavia someday. The chamber, Main Street, and the city are getting the word out about our exciting restaurant madness promotion this year. Our local video expert, both and pictures owner Andrew Schoens, has worked with over 30 of our local restaurants and created fun, professional 15- to 30-second commercials to highlight our amazing restaurants we have in town. Each restaurant offers a customized promotion, which can be redeemed March 20th through March 24th. Please look at the chambers, Batavia Main Street, or the city's Facebook page to view the individual promotions. As you know, good food is the sole reason we're here on this earth. Mark your calendars and make sure you dine in or carry out March 20th through the 24th. I want to welcome the businesses that joined the chamber this past month: Sharp Quarters, Stum Insurance, Douglas Carpet One, Rising Lights Project, Partners in Mortgage, Clinic Counseling, Fully Promoted of St. Charles, Diana's Cleaning Service, Y-Rent Real Estate, Adobe, National Energy Contractors, and Fox Valley Ice Arena and Fitness Fairview Golf. The State of King County Address to Businesses was hosted by the chamber last month with Chairman Corinne Perrag, and she provided a wonderful overview of some of the challenges and changes we will see in King County's future. The chamber is happy to provide a forum for sharing information from our local leaders to keep our business community informed. We will continue to provide this pertinent information. The chamber always has a full calendar of educational and networking opportunities to help our businesses develop the skills they need and the environment to thrive. We have a variety of upcoming in-person and virtual events. To get more details, register for our events, please go to the bataviachamber.org. On Wednesday, March 9th, we have our Batavia Chamber Breakfast Club, which is our morning networking at Comfort Inn. You could register in advance, walk-ins are also welcome. Batavia Women in Business After Hours Networking will be held at Kay Hollis Jewelers on Thursday, March 10th, from 4:30 to 6:30. We are stocking the shelves with personal care items and toiletries for the Batavia Interfaith Food Pantry, so please come to meet some great people and help the food pantry serve those in need in our community. Join us at our Grow Your Business Through Texting webinar to learn how texting businesses is the new ways, wave of services that consumers want. That webinar is Friday, March 11th at 9:00 a.m. We will host our Networking It at Ramondo's Pizza on Wednesday, March 16th, from 4:30 to 6:30. Our not-for-profit spotlight will be Fox Valley Hands of Hope. Come learn more about that awesome organization. We are celebrating the 25 North Coworking Annex Grand reopening with a multi-chamber ribbon cutting on Wednesday, March 23rd at 4:30. You can join us for that great event. And as I've been telling you guys, Thursday, April 28th, is our Inspire Celebration at 6:00 p.m. at Lincoln Inn. We'll be honoring the best of Batavia. This event is open to all, and I encourage our aldermen, city staff, business reps, and community members to join us. Please register today on our website. Check the chamber's website, bataviachamber.org, to register for our events, sign up for our services, or for other important information. You could also text the chamber at 478CHAMBER. Before I introduce my esteemed guest, does anybody have any questions for me this evening?
Any questions, Margaret?
I have a question.
Sure.
Just for clarification, I think, for everybody. The events sponsored by Batavia Women in Business, they put on some nice events. That is, they are not for, just for women. They're sponsored by Batavia Women in Business, correct? They are open to men and women?
That is correct, yes, yes. We encourage men to join us. The council is women, but they put on events for everyone, so, yes. Please join us. You'll feel comfortable and welcome. Thank you.
And I'm there more often than not, just Margaret brings me along, so there are men there, I will tell you that.
Thank you for representing. Okay, now I would like to invite up my esteemed guest, Kurt Croson of United Safety Transfer, to speak. Kurt and his wife Shayna own United Safety Transfer, which provides a wonderful non-emergency medical transportation service to our town. So come on up, Kurt.
Mayor Schelti and council, a pleasure to be here today. I would like to talk to you about United Safety Transfer. I do apologize, because I do get a bit emotional about this. This company was started based on my mother and my father and my wife's caretakers. She's a caretaker who take care of people in trying to get transportation for people to and from their doctor's appointments, to and from their doctor visits, even just to get their nails done. Anything that people who are in a wheelchair and need service, we were struggling to find a way to get people to and from. It was decided that after my parents passed away, that we would decide to open up this company. And this company, then, we decided that we were going to try to do a better job than other businesses that are out there. We specialize in dialysis and dialysis customers, because we understand a dialysis customer is somebody who spends four hours on dialysis and then can spend, in some cases, up to an hour waiting for their transport to take them home. We always tell everybody that we are waiting on you. You do not wait on us. We believe in giving our customers a certain level of dignity and a privacy when they ride with us, and we believe in giving them the best service that we can possibly offer, an on-time service and reliable service. We also have been working with the local community here in Batavia, trying to offer discounts for people who want to go to church. So we're now offering discounts for people that truly want to go to church, and we're trying to help them in the local churches here in our area in Batavia. We have been in business now for about a year and six months. Truly has been an amazing time for us. We've seen a lot of great customers and made a lot of good friends. And we're just happy that we are established here in Batavia, and we really believe that this is the place to be, and that we are excited to work with the local dialysis centers here and give them all that we can to support them and get them their patients to and from. That's pretty much all I have. So is there any questions, or does anybody like to ask anything of me?
Do you have a website or phone numbers?
Yes, yeah, we do have a website, and we do have flyers. If anybody would like one, we can, we'd be more than happy to hand them out to you guys. It's unitedsafetytransfer.com.
So you're standing here, and you're on a public TV station, and I'm going to offer you the opportunity to give us your phone number if you want to call and make an appointment. How would you do that?
Sure, sure.
What number would you call?
You can give us a call. We're 630-701-8978. We are 24/7/365. We will transport anybody, anywhere, anytime.
Do you have a limit of how far you would go in that transport? Somebody said, "I want to go to Columbus, Ohio."
Well, no, actually, we have moved, we have taken people out of state. So we do do long-distance transfers as well.
I think that's good for people to know that you, because I could, I've had people call me wanting to know where they can find somebody to do that. So it's good to know you're around.
Yeah. And we're very proud of our vans. Our vans are newer, state-of-the-art vans, and we keep our vans very, very clean. And we are constantly wiping them down and so forth, so COVID.
Anybody on the council? Well, welcome to Batavia, and we wish you many years of business growth and success. And I'm sure, given specifically, as I just discussed with Culvers, with the number of senior citizens we now have living in this town, I could see there's going to be a connecting need there for a lot of people to go someplace and do something. So it's good to have you in the town. Welcome.
Thank you very much, and it's truly an honor to speak with you guys.
Thank you. All right, we have anybody else in the audience tonight?
Your Honor, before we move on, I wanted to go back to the crosswalk question. I have a question for Gary. What would it take for us to, do we have a process we'd have to go through with IDOT if we wanted to remove a crosswalk? I know it's a nightmare to try to add one, but what would it require for us if we wanted to, the council decided we wanted to remove that?
So any work within IDOT's right of way is going to require a submitted to IDOT request for a permit and their approval. That any work you do will require that.
I just know we're not going to have a Cal meeting tomorrow night, so I wanted to bring that back up tonight. So if we wanted to talk about that, or if we wanted to think about that, that that's what we'd have to go through to be able to do anything like that with that.
Well, the only comment I'd add to that is, is that the budget of the Illinois Department of Transportation is approved by the members of the Illinois General Assembly, which are, you know, there's, what is it, 144 in the House and 58 in the Senate, or something like that. And we have elected representatives to that body that are in Springfield representing us right now. And so I, you know, if people feel strongly about that, I would encourage you to contact our state representatives. I think it'd be pretty easy to get their names and numbers and just share with them your concerns about what's going on. And see, if they wanted to, they could probably help us move this along to IDOT. But it's going to take that level of involvement, I think, to do something.
I know several of us will be going down to the drive-down in a couple of weeks, so I also wanted to think about that. Maybe we'll put that on the agenda at the next Cal meeting.
meeting and have a discussion about it.
I have to reach out to our state representative, I just can't, I can't. I just couldn't imagine another parent getting that call, and having the worst result.
I would encourage you to do that, I mean, in, in the case of every, see, the way the Illinois General Assembly is made up, there are, for every Senate district, which I think there are 58, am I right on that?
I believe so.
There are two House seats, two different House seats under that Senate seat. So there's three people right now that are out there that represent Batavia in some form or fashion, and the way they've carved up this map, and I'm still trying, I was told the council the other night in committee, I've got the staff upstairs, and we're still trying to figure out this remapping of Illinois, which has been done, they've done it, it's supposed to be by population, so you have the same number of people living in each of these districts, but the maps they've put out so far really are struggling to put them together so you know who really is the congress, or the representative of this district and who isn't. And in the case of Batavia, I'm not so sure, we don't have three, three different parts of the community. I know we got, we picked up another congressman, which, and he's only up on the very northeast corner, or north, northeast corner of Batavia, where the, the gas station is at Fabian and Route 30, and Route 25, and there's about seven or eight houses behind the gas station that are in a congressional district that starts up in Schaumburg, and it comes down and ends up in Batavia with seven houses and a gas station. I don't know how we drew that one, but they did, and so those are the nuances that they want, but, you know, feel free to give me a call at the office during the day sometime, and I've tried to get you some names and numbers of people that you could call.
I'd appreciate that.
All right. Anybody else? I guess that ends the, the...
Your Honor, I think Alderman Beck online.
Oh, sorry, Alderman Beck, go ahead.
Thank you. Are the residents still in the room that spoke about the crossing?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to thank them for coming down, for, for speaking with us tonight and for contacting us via email. The first time I think I ever spoke to city council was also about Batavia Avenue, so it's a short path to, you know, coming down and talking about this road, and then, you know, submitting for petitions to run for, run for office. So I just wanted to say that your concern is heard, that we have been talking about this since I've been on the council for three years, that although it sounds like a really long timeframe, that I'm encouraged by the movement that we've, that we've made on the road diet, and I would be happy to speak with any of you that have questions about what that is and why we think it might alleviate some of the concerns we have for that road, I would be happy to chat with you.
Very good, thank you. Anybody else? All right, I guess then we will leave the matters from the public for the night, and appreciate everybody that came down. Moving then to item number nine, which is approval of Class D1 Restaurant All Liquor Law License Application for Rivalry 675 Located at 675 South River Street in the old VFW Hall. Who's got this one?
Yes, I have this one, Your Honor.
Alderman Rosado, I'm going to step out for this one.
Okay, thank you. All right, this item was discussed at the 3-1 Committee at the Hall and passed unanimously. Do we have anyone from Rivalry 675 online or here tonight?
I don't see anybody.
If that's the case, then I would make a motion to approve Class D1 Liquor License Application for Rivalry 675 Located at 675 South River Street in Batavia.
Second. Moved by Alderman Rosado, second by Alderman Wolfe, for the approval of the Class D1 License for Rivalry 675 at 675 South River Street. Just to put a face on this address, this is the old VFW hangar, not the actual lodge hall, but the large hangar that was built to the south, that originally was an open-air building, and then they eventually closed it and added heat, and now they're renting or leasing it to this gentleman for a nice, very nice banquet hall. This gentleman's been in the business a long time, I think he knows what he's doing, so I'm optimistic that this will be successful. I've already talked to a couple people who have already lined up wedding receptions there, so it's just going to have some activity. Any further comments? Or call the roll.
My apologies, Rosado.
Aye.
Beck, oom, sorry, Connolly.
Aye.
Chanzet.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Sulfah.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Ayazi.
Aye.
Malley.
Aye.
Euer.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
Vogelsinger.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Thirteen yes, no-nos, one absent.
Motion's approved. Okay, moving to item number 10, which is Ordinance 22-11, Amending the Official Zoning Map for a Planned Development Overlay District at 470 through 490 North Randall Road, Meskula Burgers LLC, which is the Culvers.
Yes, that's exactly what I was going to say, Your Honor, this is for the Culvers Restaurant located out along Randall Road. This is the amendment for the zoning map for the Planned Development Overlay, for that change to that property. Anybody have any questions? If not, I'll make the motion that we approve Ordinance 22-11, Amending the Official Zoning Map for Planned Development Overlay District at 470 to 490 North Randall Road for Mesuka Burger LLC applicant.
Second. Moved by Alderman Wolfe, second by Alderman Sulfah, for the approval of Ordinance 22-11 for the planned unit overlay district at 470 to 490 North Randall Road. Further discussion?
So Alderman Beck is back in the meeting.
Let the record reflect, Alderman Beck has returned to the meeting. Kurt, call the roll.
Wolf.
Aye.
Sulfah.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Ayazi.
Aye.
Malley.
Aye.
Euer.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
Vogelsinger.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Rosado.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Connolly.
Aye.
Chanzet.
Aye.
Fourteen yes, no-no, no absent.
Ordinance 22-11 is approved, moving to item number 11, which is Ordinance 22-12, Conditional Use Permit for Drive-Thru Restaurant in a G.C. General Commercial District, 470 North Randall Road, for Culvers Meskuga Burger LLC. Alderman Wolfe?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. This is the conditional use permit for that property for the drive-through, and I believe one small variance for the landscaping on it. It'll be more landscaping than it's out there today, but because it was done so long ago, it doesn't totally conform to what we would do today, so there's a slight change in what we allowed out there. It's really the only change on it. Anybody else have any comments or questions? Now, I'll make the motion that we approve Ordinance 22-12, the Conditional Use Permit for a Drive-Thru Restaurant in a General Commercial District at 470 North Randall Road, for Culvers Mesuka Burger LLC applicant.
Second. Moved by Alderman Wolfe, second by Alderman Sulfah, for the approval of Ordinance 22-12, to permit for a Drive-Thru Restaurant LLC at 470 North Randall Road, Culvers, the applicant. Any further discussion? Kurt, call the roll.
Wolf.
Aye.
Sulfah.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Ayazi.
Aye.
Malley.
Aye.
Euer.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
Vogelsinger.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Rosado.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Connolly.
Aye.
Chanzet.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Sulfah.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Ayazi.
Aye.
Malley.
Aye.
Euer.
Aye.
Thirteen yes, no-no, none absent.
Welcome to Batavia.
Ordinance 22-12 is approved by a vote of fourteen yes, no-nos, none absent. Welcome to Batavia, residents and new owner that's in the audience, so looking, greatly looking forward to you. I don't know in my many years here that I've ever had so many people ask me, when's this going to be open, especially this senior citizen population, so I hope you got a lot of salads and soup ready, because I think you're going to be selling a lot of it in Batavia, so. Motion's approved. All right, moving to 12, which is Resolution 21-032-R, Customer-Owned Self-Generation Interconnection Policy. Who's got this?
Your Honor, I'm going to step out for these next three.
Okay.
I've got this, Your Honor. This, actually, this and the next two items are connected to the siege of legislation and the changes we've, we've had to make internally, and we've, you know, I guess I should mention, based on the last couple items and these three in a row, for the people in the audience and anyone online, you seem to hear a lot of just eyes that we're sitting here okay in these things, but for the most part, the sausage gets made in the Committee of the Hall meetings, and we're just here for final approvals, but we've, these three items have been worked on for several weeks, and Gary, thank you for, in the resolutions, there's a nice recap of, of the changes that we've made to the, our own legislation, and so, does anybody have any comments or questions regarding Resolution 21-32-R? With that, I would make a motion to approve Resolution 21-32-R, Customer-Owned Self-Generation Interconnection Policy.
Second. Moved by Alderman...
Serone.
Serone. Second by Alderman Connolly, for the approval of Resolution 21-32-R, Customer-Owned Self-Generation Interconnection Policy.
Roll call, please.
Any further discussion? Kurt, call the roll.
Serone.
Aye.
Vogelsinger, I apologize. Miller.
Aye.
Rosado.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Connolly.
Aye.
Chanzet.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Sulfah.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Ayazi.
Aye.
Malley.
Aye.
Euer.
Aye.
Thirteen yes, no-no, one absent.
Ordinance Resolution 21-032-R is approved, thirteen yes, no-nos. Did you just say one absent?
One absent.
One absent. Okay, moving to 13, which is Resolution 22-030-R, Approving of Self-Generation and Net Billing Policy. Alderman Serone?
Yes, this is clarifying that switching over to net billing. Anybody have any comments or questions on this?
I just want to make one comment, and that's to thank you for what you just said in the previous one about how much time this has taken, this council and Committee of the Hall meetings to go through, because I got to believe in the last four meetings, five meetings...
It's been three, four, yeah.
You guys have spent at least an hour and a half, if not two-plus hours, on each night dealing with all these various questions and hearing the yeas and the nays, and what's right and what's wrong, and whatever.
And that's the easy part, Gary's got to...
Right.
Regurgitate it into a nice policy.
Gary's, Gary's staff have done a wondrous job, in my opinion, because there was a lot of misconceptions starting out here that I detected just sitting in the room, listening to the conversations, and I, I hear from other mayor, fellow mayors, that are, some of them are having the same conversations in their communities about solar panels and what's, what is the price of a solar panel, and apparently there's several people in the business, so those prices vary all over the place, so it's, there's, there's a lot of private business in all this stuff that most people don't realize.
And it was a unique scenario in that I don't think there was a clear, easy answer. We want to support clean energy and move in that direction, but also be cognizant to the ratepayers of, of our own plant, so.
Absolutely.
I see Abby, you wanted to comment?
Yes, thanks. I just wanted to comment that my, my position on the next two haven't changed since the committee discussions. I do really appreciate the compromise that was made, that instead of going just from retail to wholesale pricing in one fell swoop, that we did the stepped approach. I just agree with the residents that spoke, that the timing of those steps being based on market factors and the solar penetration of our, of our city would be a, a better route to go. And I'm also still just not comfortable with the language in there, potentially leaving a resident solely responsible for a neighborhood-level infrastructure upgrade. I know that the chances are low, but if they were zero, then we could have taken it out, so it's still a no for me, but I appreciate the compromise that was made.
Thank you.
Very good point.
Yes, and I will say, I was happy that we did decide to come to a compromise on that, instead of just changing it from a wholesale, or retail to a wholesale price, as far as a reimbursement for a solar customer. So I think we tried to, to do that, I think we listened to the residents that were here, a lot of information was presented, we did spend a lot of time on that, and then really talk it out to get to the point where we ended up, so I think we're in a good position.
I think the most important thing is keeping this on topic and keep reviewing it and looking at it, as times are going to change, and they're going to change quickly, so we'll, we'll stay nimble and be able to adjust. With that, I will make a motion to approve Resolution 22-30-R, Approval of Self-Generation and Net Billing Policy.
Second, Miller. Moved by Alderman Serone, second by Alderman Miller, for the approval of Resolution 22-030-0, Approval of Self-Generation and Net Billing Policy. Any further discussion? Kurt, call the roll.
Serone.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Rosado.
Aye.
Beck.
No.
Connolly.
Aye.
Chanzet.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Sulfah.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Ayazi.
Aye.
Malley.
Aye.
Euer.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
Vogelsinger.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Rosado.
Aye.
Beck.
No.
Connolly.
Aye.
Chanzet.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Sulfah.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Ayazi.
Aye.
Malley.
Aye.
Euer.
Aye.
Twelve yes, one no, one absent.
Motion's approved.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. All right, looks like we're through with the voting matters of business, and so now we're going to go to the administrator's report, but she's out of town at the moment, so her well-versed assistant, Anthony, is here, so Anthony, I'm going to turn it over to you for the administrator's report.
Thank you very much, Mayor and Council. Yes, my name is Anthony, I am on behalf of our city administrator, Laura Newman, presenting to you the project status from our Community and Economic Development Department. The Winding Creek Development Final Approvals will be on the Cal for the March 15th meeting. We will also have an ordinance dissolving the SSA that was established for the One Washington Place Project on that agenda as well.
of our City Administrator Laura Newman presenting to you the project status from our Community and Economic Development Department. The Windin Creek Development Final Approvals will be on the Cal for the March 15th meeting. We will also have an ordinance dissolving the SSA that was established for the One Washington Place Project on that agenda as well. The Plan Commission will have their regular meeting on March 16. They will be reviewing various tax amendments to the zoning code, including a separate request to amend a text to allow electronic message centers in the industrial zoning district. They will also be considering an after-the-fact variance request for a deck that was built without a permit on Batavia Avenue. Signs for the city's downtown properties have now been erected on all four parcels being made available. We are still revising the RFP language and will have that information available for council soon. From our Police Department, on Tuesday, March 8th, which is tomorrow, the Batavia Board of Fire and Police Commissioners will have its regular monthly meeting. On the agenda will be the hiring of one officer from the Certified Lateral Secondary Eligibility Register. From our Public Works Department, Engineering has once again secured a CDBG funding for pavement resurfacing. The Summer Spring Street from Prairie Street to Hamlet Street will be resurfaced with the CDBG funds. So that's wonderful to have that awarded to our Engineering Department to further do work. In addition, we will have Public Works Staff attend the Annual Illinois Public Employer Labor Relations Association Employment Law Seminar. This is a one-day event that covers employment law issues. And lastly, from our Administration Department, I just want to make mention that tomorrow, March 8th, our Cal meeting has been canceled. So the next meeting, which is a Cal meeting, will be next Tuesday, March 15. Again, tomorrow's Cal meeting has been canceled and we will have one on 3:15. That is the administrator's report.
Any questions of Anthony this evening? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving then to committee reports, Community Development. Alderman Wolfe?
No report for Community Development. I did want to report for, as Chairman of the Committee of the Hall, that we will add the McKee Street Crosswalk Discussion for the 15th and then also just a general reminder that yard waste pickup starts next week, next Monday, and the first two weeks are free. So if you're ready to go, get out there and clean it up.
Very good. Any questions of Alderman Wolfe? Public Utilities, Alderman Rosado?
No, that's me. Public Utilities.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No report, Your Honor.
Community Development?
So City Services, nothing to
City Services.
Nothing to report this time, Your Honor.
Public Safety, anybody got anything on that?
Government Services.
Government Services, Alderman Chanzet up there, do you have anything?
No report, Your Honor.
All right, I think we covered all the committees. We have other business from the councils tonight?
See a hand up?
Jennifer Barron.
Who?
Alderman Barron. Has a hand raised.
Alderman Barron, do you have something to ask for?
I do. Yes, thank you, Mayor. Life Scout Ethan Tarver is going to be hosting a free screening of the S-word to support the work of Suicide Prevention Services of America, which is a local nonprofit here in Batavia. Following the screening, there'll be a Q&amp;A session with local mental health professionals. That will be happening on Thursday, March 24th at the Batavia Park District Civic Center at 327 West Wilson Street, right here in Batavia. The doors will open at 7:00 and the screening will begin at 7:00 PM. Because of limited seating, there is, they are asking for people to sign up at Sign Up Genius. You can access the link at Suicide Prevention's Facebook page under their events section or on their website under their events section. Thank you, Your Honor.
I'll add to that, Your Honor. He's going to be down here next City Council meeting on the 21st to promote this, so if that goes well, you might want to get your tickets sooner if there's limited seating.
Is he going to show the whole thing at the council?
No, no, no. He's just going to come and tell us, you know, promote it, just like Alderman Barron just did, a little more in-depth probably.
Okay. Any other comments from any of the Aldermen on any issue? Okay, no other business then? Okay. Under the mayor's report, I very, very quickly here, I just have a few things I think you'll find somewhat of interest. We talked earlier when the chamber was here about the boardwalk shops and the election for mayors, as you may remember, was a year ago last April. And about two days after the election was over, I got a call from a mayor in the area and she asked me if she could come down and look at this thing that Batavia had put on Wilson Street. So she came down and we walked over and looked at it and I was told yesterday that Algonquin, it was the mayor of Algonquin that came, they are building their boardwalk shops as we speak. So Batavia ideas get passed around and I somewhat complimented that all the work that a bunch of you did and there's some of you on the phone really helped put that thing together and, you know, it's worked and we now have, I know we have more people wanting to move in there this year than we did last year, so I think that's a good thing, but I'm very pleased. And Alderman Callahan, who's not on the council anymore, was certainly one of the driving forces, as was Alderman Malley and a couple others that really got into this thing, and it seems to have worked very well. And so now we've got people in there wanting to steal the idea from us. I don't think, I shouldn't use that word, but it's good to see.
Well, we stole it from somebody, so.
It's a good theft. It can be.
Right, it's good that you can see it. Another thing I wanted to share with you is it's been, I think, well over a year, Chief, our new fire truck is what, a year and a half now behind in delivery?
Yes.
Okay, so I have, you know, I have my opportunity to go and talk to a whole bunch of mayors on occasion, so I went recently and shared that piece of news. Well, I shared that and I found out that I was full, a room full of city officials who had the same problem going on. And so we kind of passed the word around to all this village presidents and mayors that the next time you get a chance to see your congressman, and there's quite a few of them here in the Chicago Land area, it might not hurt if you make mention that, hey, my town's been waiting a year to get a, what is it, a computer chip from China? Yeah, we're waiting for a year to get a computer chip from China and that we as US officials think that it's, time has arrived for the US business industry to make computer chips to put into fire engines so that their constituents in our towns aren't sitting here waiting a year and a half for beyond the delivery date of a new fire engine. And Chief, you want to make some?
I'll just also add that they notified me today, hopefully our engine will be here in about two, three months, all the chips for next, for this whole year are spoken for. So they don't even have chips that contain for this year. So anything ordered this year, we'll have to be put off for that. We do have one in the budget to order this.
I mean, given it's public safety and you're, basically you're out saving lives with these vehicles, why we as a country have put ourselves in a position where we have to go to China to get a computer chip? There's something wrong here. And I think most of my compadres in the mayor, rural and village president agenda said that, we're with you on that one. Let's start raising Cain about this thing, that this is crazy. This just does not make good sense. This doesn't make good national policy, even international policy. This is just strange how this whole thing came to be. So anyway, we thought we'd do that. The other thing just is a, we've got a gentleman who graduated from Batavia High School in 1966 and I'm not supposed to say his name yet because he's not ready to talk about it, but I have been working with him along with several other people in town and he is going to write a book about Batavia High School in the 1960s. Because that was during that 10-year period, we had some very interesting things happen at Batavia High School, including the fact that in 1966 on our basketball team, we had one guy that signed a professional basketball contract, another football and another one baseball. And we may be the only high school basket, or team in America that signed three different athletes to professional contracts off the same team. And then we had some other anecdotal things happen in this town that, but we, for whatever reason, and if you look right behind the fire chief sitting at the back of the room there, you see the picture of that astronaut standing on the moon. And that's Buzz Aldrin, who was the second one that got off the capsule and put the flag on the moon. And we're getting ready to add some more documentation to that because Buzz Aldrin's grandfather was a minister of the Batavia Methodist Church from 1915 to 1918. And I took you upstairs to my office, I have a picture of Buzz Aldrin's mother attending the West Side School in Batavia in 1916. And her name ironically was Marion Moon. And her son ended up being one of the two astronauts to land on the moon. But what is further interested in this is that when the three astronauts came back from this very successful flight, and if you think of all the events that occurred in the last century, landing on the moon was probably in the top five as a worldwide recognition. Very interesting, they wrote a book called First on the Moon and they got some writer to come and meet with all three of them and they all added their input as to how it felt when they landed and when they took off and whatever have you. One of the things this writer did was, is he wrote where the key components on this rocket that took us to the moon landed and then successfully took off, reconnected with the orbiting capsule and then came back to Earth, where those components were made. And we can put our pride on our table here because the fuel lines that were used in the rocket that landed on the moon in 1969 were made in this room. And so, and that's in the book. So Batavia really has some things that we can pound our chest about. Right at the moment, there's, this guy is doing some research that those of us who are old enough to remember this, in the 1960s, and I believe it was 1964, was the year the Beatles first came to America. And they came on a 19 tour of towns across America and they, I don't know if those of you may have seen film of it, they landed and all the girls screamed and fainted and then they had these big concerts and they sang these songs and all this good stuff. Well, ironically, before they, on all 19 tours or presentations that they built, they had two opening acts that kind of warmed the crowd up before the four boys ran out on the stage. And the first act out was the Righteous Brothers and they wrote some very well-known songs. And then the second person out was a girl by the name of Jackie DeShannon. And she wrote, Put a Little Love in Your Heart and What the World Needs Now. And I've been asked this so many times that I know it by heart. As a girl growing up in Batavia, she lived at 713 East Wilson Street in 39 South Mallory. So I have people coming in wanting to know where that was because they want to go take pictures of her house. She won the Grammy Award in 83. So, I mean, we've got, this thing that this guy's working on for '62 is going to have some pretty interesting Batavia stories in it. When you talk about, you know, landing on the moon and the Beatles' first tour and all this other stuff, we've got stuff that, I had the mayor of Rosemont in here one day and you know what he's got up there in Rosemont with the Allstate Arena and all that good stuff. So I walked him through here and I was telling him all this history and he says to me, "Well, Jeff, you know what I got in Rosemont, but on a history perspective, you got me beat." So, anyway, that's the end of my report. I just thought I'd throw those out there tonight to give you a little comeuppance about what's going to be coming out about our town. And it's not some scandalous wild things, it's pretty interesting national history when you can say that you had this fuel line that landed on the moon the first time made in your city council chambers. So, entertaining motion for adjournment.
Mayor, we have a hand up from Alderman Vogel singer.
Okay, go ahead.
I'll be super quick. First of all, I just want to mention, relating back to the boardwalk shops, the city of Berwyn took our idea as well, or not took our idea, it wasn't our idea. They are opening their boardwalk shops this year for the first time. They announced them last week. They're super excited. So if anyone is shopping in that area anytime soon, check those out. And then I also wanted to echo Alderman Beck's sentiments and thank the residents who came to speak about that intersection. Thank you. Your voices were heard.
Anybody else? Alderman Wolfe, you want to make a motion?
Make a motion for adjournment.
Second. Moved by Alderman Wolfe, second by Alderman Sulfah. Kirk, take a voice vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.